It's seven forty-five. On uh, Monday, September ninth, and I'm calling the Groton Board of Education Special Meeting to order. The agenda item is discussion, possible action regarding an operational review. Would anyone like to, well, I, I'd just like to say something quickly. Um, I do have a motion. However, I understand there's another motion. Uh, that we may discuss. I um, I just want to go on record that um. The whole reason uh, that this is being discussed is that the town of Groton. Hires an audit firm uh, under state law to do an annual audit. Um, and one of the recommendations of that. Uh, audit was a, a type of operational review. Um, and so I believe that the town council believes it's incumbent upon them as. The employer of the audit firm to carry out the recommendations. And so my hope is that we can work collaboratively. Uh, with the town council on a review. Um, and I've been assured that um, that is something we can do. In fact, I've already. Made a couple of suggestions and the scope has actually um, changed somewhat in, in response to that. And so I look forward to working with the town council on this. I realize that some people believe that. There should be complete autonomy. Uh, and in terms of education, uh, there is. However, we are dealing with taxpayer money here, and I think we're all on the same. Side that we want to make sure we have up-to-date policies, procedures, and best practices. You know, as suggested by the, the auditors. And so. I just want to go on record that I, I want to collaborate with the, uh, the council. With the total understanding that other people may disagree. I also. Would like this audit, um, or this review to uh. Analyze the permanent staffing needs of the business office, provide temporary staffing support. Uh, during the review and that the review begin uh, in January after the new business managers had time to acclimate themselves to the office. So. Having said that, I will now. Entertain any other. Comments anybody would like to make. Matthew?
Thank you. I wanted to try to. Make some personal remarks, not on behalf of the board, but just simply as an individual member of the board is no way. Represents a board position. I wanted to do this. To frame what I hope will be a robust discussion tonight in the spirit of collaboration. It's my, my particular thing. So some people are really good extemporaneously. I know my limits. So you are. Invited to take a quick four-minute nap or pay attention for four minutes. It will be brief. Board of Ed colleagues, council members, and Groton parents and residents. Please note that my remarks represent my personal assessment of issues and solutions. Concerning the town council's call for an operational view, review. And should in no way be construed as reflecting the position of Groton's Board of Education. This board has lived through a painful five to six months during which needed discussions about curricula. Children's academic and developmental progress, staff recruitment and retention. Professional staff development, et cetera, et cetera. Have been largely displaced by endless budget-related meetings. It is clear to me, and it's just personal, that an operational review of Groton Public Schools budgeting. Of the board's role in the budgeting process. And in the board's role in the oversight of taxpayer and grantee funds will be beneficial. This operational review will help us respond to the same financial stresses faced by public education around the country. As well as to some challenges that are specific to Groton. The major external national stresses to public education, at least in my opinion, are one. Coping with the lingering effect of COVID on our students' social development and academic performance. Two. Elimination of a hundred and twenty-five positions funded, previously funded by now expired COVID nineteen relief funds. And three. Great inflation seen in huge increases in transportation, health insurance, fuel, utility costs. Groton-specific challenges include A, the loss of our assistant superintendent and the several business managers. B, a change in the budget rollout process designed in the light of the arrival of four new members to join the nine-person board at the start of the budget season. And C, the need to upgrade our current spreadsheet account reporting to a state-of-the-art system that should be fully compatible with town accounting. All of these factors intersected to produce a clunky audit review and new budget form. Formulation process that was not clearly optimal to a best practices budget process. Things that both the Board of Ed and Town Council noted and are responding to. However. In spite of some public comments to the contrary. The auditors came to the same conclusion concerning their audits of both the town and Groton Public School finances. Both the towns and Groton Public School finance audits were clean. But both audits, audit reports contained recommendations to strengthen future accounting performance. As the town moves forward with its audit sponsorship. The best practice in defining audits' scope of work. Lies in councils inviting active Board of Education participation. True collaboration between Groton's elected bodies requires that both acknowledge. That neither knows enough about the other's functions to devise a scope of work on its own. One example among several of what this single board member considers to be the council's overreach according to its draft scope of work. Is its proposed intention to quote determine how board employees are hired, budgeted, and what benefits are offered.
This is a function. Leave out anything derogatory about the other body?
I did not see anything derogatory.
Suggesting overreach, so.
I, I take, I, I accept that criticism with thanks. According to its draft scope of work. Is its proposed intention to quote determine how Board of Education employees are hired, budgeted, and what benefits are offered. This is a function attributed by the legislature to the duly-elected Board of Education. Again, I fully support the concept of an operational review. But not if it is structured along the lines of the latest council draft scope of work. For however noble council's intentions may be. Their draft, in my opinion. Functionally transfers authority for the education of our community's young people to the town council from its electorally chosen Board of Education. Only with true collaboration between the town council and Board of Education. Will we be able to define and implement best management practices leading to the optimal education of our children on fiscally sound basis. I respect the request that this communication be inserted in its entirety in the meets. This September ninth, twenty twenty-four, Board of Education Special Meeting. Signed by me as a member. And uh, I guess if Joan's listening to this later for minutes, I will get you a copy for her so she doesn't have to. Tear her hair out. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, Adrian.
Yeah, so um, I. I've been um, struggling with an operational review for a while now. And I personally feel that the best way to ensure that a review is in the best interest of the students for the Board of Ed. Is for the Board of Ed to um, to do the review. The board-funded um. Software, which we now know is not going to be purchased this year and is not going to be purchased in the next couple of years, I believe, because of existing contracts. So.
That was two different softwares, though. We, we, the board wants to purchase a budget presentation software. We still need something to do the general ledger and do the.
Alright.
They're, they're not mutually.
Well.
One does something, the other doesn't.
Well, can I add this part too? Because I know that one of the things we're looking at is. Eventually, when this expires in the next twenty months, is to get on with the munis. That was a recommendation that came from. Current Finance Director. And then we would have something that would connect together. So to maybe offset and not get the budget offer at this time and invest in that, to hold off on that, but then to start putting our money towards. The purchase of munis and we're looking to see what that would cost. So that was a suggestion, a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I realize that. So. We had discussions last, last winter. About budgeting software. Um, at that time, we thought we could have something maybe implemented for this year that doesn't seem to be possible at this point. And it doesn't, to my knowledge, we're not planning on buying anything in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, as far as budgeting software. So we had a discussion, we earmarked money for fiscal year twenty-five. For budgeting software, which we're not going to use. By using that money, which is a very similar amount, to fund an operational review, we are following through. On the principle or the um. The intent, which is to provide clear and concise um, data or, or a. A review in allowing, I'm sorry, I'm trying to paraphrase here. That we're giving the town more open um. Discourse or. I apologize. Transparency, I apologize.
Uh, Adrian passed out a motion that he had written up prior to the meeting. Um, that's right at the beginning of this meeting. And I would just say, I, I, I see where you're going with this and. I mean, discussions can happen a lot, motions on the floor. So if you want to just, I mean, the motion says it all pretty much as far as I'm concerned. I, I, I skimmed it over here, so maybe you just want to make a motion.
Yeah, so I guess I will read what I have here. Um, I'd like to make a motion for the Board of Education. To fund and contract for an operational review of the finances of the Groton Board of Education for the physical years of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. With additional scope of review of the business office staffing. The review will also include, but not be limited to. Coordination with the town manager to review procedures as they relate to the town department of finance. The Board of Education's financial reports and practices relating to health insurance. Review of payroll funds and related items, special education costs, systems utilization relating to budgeting and accounting software. And practices. Reviewing policies and procedures of current controls over general ledger maintenance. Busing contract costs. And excess property costs. The operational review will be funded by reclassifying. Funds reserved for budgeting software in the physical year twenty twenty-five to an operational review.
Now, second that motion.
Point of information clarification. Did you have? Is there, is this an amendment to an existing motion? Did you make your motion?
I, no, I, I was allowing the discussion to continue. I was going to start with my motion. As a courtesy, I allowed discussion to occur. I have a motion which goes in a totally different direction, which. Based on how this motion goes, I, I will introduce. So at this point, as a courtesy, he's, he's going first. I think the difference between Adrian and myself is. That the audit. Made recommendations to the town, who was the employer of the auditor under state law. And so I would argue that they have. Uh, or a responsibility to carry out those recommendations. And I would suggest that we do it in a collaborative fashion. The town and the board uh, together. And that's what I would request. Of the town council is to collaborate. And so far, my discussions um, indicate that that. Is a possibility, but again, there's no guarantee because the, the council has to vote on this. Um, but I think we need to reach a point where we're working with the council and um. Again, collaboratively to, to come to, we, we all agree, well, I shouldn't say we all, many of us agree we need an operational review. I just think that we should be working with the town on it and not on parallel tracks. I firmly believe that if we were to adopt this, a motion this evening, they're still going to go ahead with. What they want to do. Except now they won't have the input that my uh, motion would provide uh, going forward. So.
So where does Robert's rules?
But there's only one motion on the floor.
Yeah, I know. But yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, I. I wanted, I wanted to hear both. Points of view. I didn't want it to be a motion and emotion. You know what I mean? And I don't know what Robert says, but common sense says we should be talking about it instead of voting on it before we heard anything else.
Can I, may I ask a question of Adrian and Ian? In, in the spirit of discussion. Uh, Jay has said he would give you the courtesy of going first. Would you temporarily withdraw your motion in seconds so we could have a broad conversation? With the understanding that you would go first in a motion that would preserve your precedence?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if that's necessary to, for, I, I can read the motion just for, as a point of information, right? Without his actually withdrawing.
That's your, that would be your discussion.
That would be your discussion point.
Yes. It's, I think it's sufficiently broad. You're going to say, well, I agree with something and I disagree with something else and I would go with this approach. Then you're, you're welcome. Doesn't have to be a motion.
Right, alright. Just for. Information, I'm going to read what I would have suggested. And so these are the alternates that. Well, these are two of the options. Anyone can then suggest whatever.
I think that answered my question.
Yeah. So in the spirit of continuous improvement and cognizant of our responsibility to the taxpayers of Groton. Uh, I would move that the Groton Board of Education collaborates with the town council. To facilitate an impartial operational review of financial policies, procedures. And best practices governing the district business office, including the way in which it interacts with the town finance department. Additionally, the board requests that this review include analyzing the permanent staffing needs of the business office. That temporary staffing support be provided during the review, that the review begin after January first, twenty twenty-five. To allow the new district business manager time to acclimate to the office. And by the way, um. In um. As I understand it. The council has uh, already in its scope changed to include this interaction with the town finance office, which. Um, was not originally in their scope.
Is that, is that an update to what we were given?
No, it's in there. So, and that, and that's just a point that there's already, there is already. Collaboration going on, and I just feel. That we need to continue to, to go along those lines. So, that's all I'm going to say. Ian?
Well, uh. I, I, I seconded Adrian's motion, uh, one for a discussion and two, um. I agree with the idea that, you know. The operational review, um, that's something, I mean, I. Made mention of something, I had the language wrong and, and I used an incorrect term back in January, but. I've been asking for something like this for quite some time, and I do believe it's the board's responsibility to do this. And it's a great opportunity for us to kind of get a, a clean slate. As uh, Matthew mentioned, you know, we have four new members on board now, five? So, no, wait, that's right. Rob left, Mike came in, both new. That's four. So, uh, yeah. Anyway, um, long story short, uh. Adrian's motion could easily be amended to blend in spirit with what Jay's motion was attempting to accomplish too. I had drafted up something and vetted it with the chair and, and with the attorney a little bit to just get a sense of like how. Uh, and my motion could actually work as an amendment to either one. And the amendment would be to uh, authorize the Board of Ed. To enter into discussion with the town council. Mayor and manager regarding jointly agreed-upon parameters for an operational review with the goal of negotiating and establishing an. MOA, a memorandum of agreement. With the town that will set the scope of services and other essential aspects and parameters of such a cooperative venture. So that, to me, like. I'm, I'm, I was in favor of Adrian's motion because um. You know, it, it kind of takes the onus upon us. We take the responsibility of leading the charge and um. We're the Board of Education. Our primary responsibility is the operation of the district. And um. All these things with the operational review fall under that, that umbrella. And we do interact with the town. When it comes to budgetary matters and we do have a responsibility to the town council and. The taxpayers of the town to account for the, the money and the financing. So, um. However. I, I see the logic in, in Adrian's motion because of that software. Money that we allocated is definitely not going to be used. For that intended purpose within this coming fiscal year. And so with that, you know, we could fund our own operational review. You know, working closely with the town. We could establish a memorandum of agreement where there is a collaborative process. But the funding comes from us. Or the primary source of funding comes from us, the initial chip on the table. And then if. There is some additional interest and needs, that's another thing that can be negotiated. Clearly and transparently uh, with uh, with memorandums of agreements, drafts. Exchanged between the two bodies and reviewed by the two bodies, not just one point person, not a small committee. But um. You know, it's, it's a very delicate matter, but if there's going to be a collaborative venture between the town and the Board of Ed on, on such a. Such a review, um, both bodies need to have equal standing and equal stake. And I think. If we were to put down the initial money and take this step and then invite the town to come and join us on the process. Um, I think that would just uh, be a more. Comfortable approach as far as uh. Our responsibility to the district. And also would avoid any sort of um, possible. Legal entanglements. Or ambiguities when it comes to jurisdiction, as you know, Matthew identified in his statement. Because again, like we would be in the driver's seat, but the town would be riding co-pilot. And, you know, guiding, helping us guide the mission and we would make sure that it would be, you know, they would be satisfied with what we're producing. Um, and what the, the whole operational view would produce. So I think by um. You know, and looking at the, the town, um, the motion for the, that's going to be on the agenda of the town council's committee, the whole tomorrow night. In a regular meeting, they have a combo, so it's going to be, they're going to ratify whatever they vote on in Cal and with a regular meeting, it's a special meeting. Uh, so it's, it's a combination meeting that should be known. It's not going to have to wait till October. They did identify an amount of money of uh, seventy-five thousand dollars, which, if my memory serves correctly, I believe we allocated either one hundred and ten thousand.
Correct.
Yeah, for, for the software.
One-ten or one-fifteen.
I was, yeah, that, that, my brain was shifting between one-ten, one, and one-fifty, but we'll go with the conservative.
One-one-five.
Right, you're saying one-one-five. I was thinking one-fifty. Either way. Seventy-five thousand moves, uh, brings us underneath that amount. And um, so we'll go with the conservative estimate of one-ten. That still leaves us a little bit of wiggle room for other software issues that we could allocate there. But I just think um. You know, there's a lot of dynamics to this operational review and um, I would like to see things that are not just financial focused, but also. Operationally focused internally to our mission of teaching and learning. And other things, staffing, like I, I, I agree with the idea of like adding more staffings from Jay's uh, motion. You know, or looking at staff, I should not say adding more staffing, but looking at our staffing. You know, ratios and requirements, what's best practices. So. You know, the ideal world, I would see, uh, I would, I would like to see Adrian's motion pass with. Perhaps my amendment attached to it where there is, you know, an open invitation to work with the town. Um, because it, you know, I do appreciate the fact that they're concerned. I mean, I, I'm concerned. A lot of people have expressed some level of concern in a lot of areas. Uh, over the past many months. But I do believe this is our ship. To steer. And it's our ship to, 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 to manage. And we do have some funds that are identified that. Could be allocated, reallocated towards that. And the board does have the authority to reallocate the funds with a vote. To that direction. And I just think it's, it's a more, a, a firmer position from which to negotiate with the town. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you. Um, just want to go back to the audit. I think we all, I don't think it's stated tonight, but the, that audit that was much talked about came back clean.
Yes.
And uh, what the management letter articulates is um, I guess. Opportunities to strengthen your internal control and improve the efficiency of your operations. And that's, that's for the town. Um, and in that management letter, there were, I believe, five recommendations. And, and three of them were for the schools and the other two were for the, the town at large. Um, the ones for the schools, one what had to do with controls on the vendor master file. Our interim uh, business manager has already tightened that up. So that's one done. The next one is uh, concerns for Ed year-end procedures. And I don't know that we consider that done, but from what I've heard over my short time on the board is that those practices are already being improved. And that again is by the interim manager, who is the, maybe the third acting manager in, in a year or so. And um, and so there's progress there, clear progress. I'm less sure about the third recommendation, which was, and this is the last one for. The schools is the general ledger ma- maintenance. That may have been discussed, but I'm not sure about where we stand on that. Um, the other two are, um, this is for the town, capital assets, construction in progress, deals with that. Um, I don't know if, if the town council is taking that up. I haven't paid attention to that part. Uh, and then the last one for the town is a fraud risk assessment, um, which. Um, I don't know where that stands. I do know it appeared in previous years, at least a couple. And so my guess is that there hasn't been movement. May, I, I guess I shouldn't guess, but I know in previous years, this recommendation hasn't been acted on. Um, so those are the five recommendations I see. Uh, in the management letter. S, unless I missed it, and I could have, there's no recommendation for an operational review. Uh, that came um, outside of um, the documents provided by the, the auditors. Um, they've connected to it, but, but outside of it. Uh, so, so I just wanted to make. Uh, have that detailed verification in what we're talking about. Um, I appreciate uh, the, the motion on the table and um, the, the motion that, that Jay summarized as well. I, I like the idea and with, with your amendment, if it, if it happens, Ian, that I, I like that I have the Board of Ed in the driver's seat. Of, 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 you know, things related to the Board of Ed. I, I like that because I think that's our. It is our requirement, like our required duty. And uh, I don't think it's anyone else's. Um, that said, the town um, as a whole has an interest in this. And so um. Having us in the driver's seat, uh, maybe you, you mentioned co-pilot, but I would like to see equal partners in this. And I think that's, that's what, what Jay's getting at, this collaboration between the two. Because, you know, if we voted tonight to, uh, as Jay mentioned. Uh, have a, a board-funded um. operational review, there's nothing stopping the, the Town Council for tomorrow voting and saying they're going to do their own too. So then we have two going on. And whether it's one or two, I have a, a broad concern here that I think we need to spend some time on is what burden is, so there could be benefits here, but there's definitely a cost as well. What burden is this going to place on the, the school staff? And does this scope, whatever scope is decided, take away from our core mission to educate our, our students? And what I see, now the Town Council, just to be clear, hasn't acted on anything yet, right? Like what we see is what they're going to consider tomorrow. And that draft is sweeping. And I can see even though there's seventy-five thousand, I think, I can't remember what that was. Yes, seventy-five thousand to be funded by the Town Department of Finance budget to, to have an operational view. It does not cover the costs of overtime. Almost certainly that's going to happen on, on the school, a school side. And we're already a lean finance department that's under transition and has been for some time. So I'm concerned about, like, we, we need a real feel for what that burden's going to be, just in terms of time. And actually just stress and morale in general. And then what does that take away from our, our core mission? So I'm concerned about that, whichever way this goes with an operational review. And what I see from the Town Council, as I said, is a really sweeping scope that could get quite a bit larger because one of them, item eight, is if necessary, recommend additional procedures or changes to scope of services in the operational review, we believe should be performed or would provide the town information that is requested in the scope of services. So this is an opening, opening the door and it, it could just keep on going. And what's already in there is looking into healthcare concerns, payroll, how people are hired, budgeted and what benefits are offered. Special education costs that is mandated by us to, to handle. I don't really knew what, know what system utilization, central square power school, exactly as phrased. Transportation, property costs and excess of budget expenditures. That's just on, that's just what's listed on item four. And that's of nine, right? So to accomplish this scope effectively, I think the Town Council would be very interested in having us not just collaborate in some way, but to be equal partners in this. So what I'd like to call for is first, that the town staff and the school staff and administrators work together, as they probably already have started to, in determining a scope of an operational view that both bodies are likely to agree on. And then have that scope presented as an MOA, a memorandum of, of agreement to both the Town Council and the Board of Ed to approve. If they're approved, then we move forward with that. What I would like to see in that memorandum of, of agreement is that the Town Council and the Board of Ed are, well, the Board of Ed, I guess, is at least on equal footing with the Town Council in setting the scope, having updates on the operational review progress and hearing the recommendations. We did not have a seat on the table in the same way for the, the overall town audit. They did not, they presented the town, they did not present to us, they would not present to us, I believe. And nor were we invited to have a, a joint meeting. So I think to have this spirit of collaboration, there has to be real partnership and a treatment of equals. And so in, in that way, us going in alone with Adrian's motion doesn't meet what I'd like to see. And, and Jay's motion comes closer, however, I still, it's not a motion yet. However, I think it's, it's too early because I would like to see the town staff and the school staff, the experts, work together on a scope. Then we vote on it and determine operation parameters going forward. Because most of, this is all backward looking. It can, it, it's going to help us moving forward. But there's no particular rush to get this started tomorrow. And actually, we're not well positioned to help with that because our, our business manager, I don't even think has come online yet. So those are long-winded comments, but that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Adrian, then I have something unless someone who has in school can wants to say something.
I have to say something, but you guys, I'll say something, but you guys can go first. I want to hear what you guys have to say.
All right. I'm going to start by saying, I am sorry for being a deer in the headlights a minute ago. I feel kind of silly about that, but, so I always write everything out so I can refer back to it. But I, I just feel that we've tried to, like, the Town Council hasn't even met as a body to discuss this review. So us voting on, on anything referring to their doing a review is premature, in my opinion. And with the BOE doing the review, I feel that it's actually being done by the Board in the interest of the children. We have tried to read the tea leaves before on what we think other groups intentions are. And in my opinions, sometimes that didn't go as well for our students and who are entrusted in educating. So I just wanted to make that statement. And then I'd also like to state that I, in this motion, I did include that recommendation out of the management letter that, that Mike had, had read. Policies and procedures of current controls be reviewed. And I also included most of the things in the scope of services in the, in the Town Council's motion. So, or if they have a motion, I guess. So I tried to be encompassing on what we think might be their interests at this point. But ours does have, it is limited in scope and controlled by the Board.
Mine, mine goes into like being a trust factor, right? Oh, sorry. Mine goes into being a trust factor, right? So if we move forward with, you know, Adrian's proposal, we're controlling the items that we're reviewing. We're controlling, you know, what we want reviewed to see where we have possible, you know, where the controls aren't as strong, right? But it's very much operational and organizational driven. And we're not delving into town charter. We're not delving into possible, I can't find it now. But it's going to remain within scope of the process of like an operational review of the business area. It's not going beyond. So I was hoping that if we did move forward with this, that the Board would trust this body of nine and Susan and her staff will do the work. And with the best interest, as we were entrusted to ensure that the district is run and monitored accordingly. So there needs to be a trust factor. And I feel like, I feel, this is just me, that we are trying to get micromanaged here.
All right. So first of all, I, I really appreciate all the work that Adrian and Ian and everyone has done on thinking this through. Mike and, and certainly Matthew with what he's written. I, I just have to, again, go on record as saying, there's no way that I'm going to reclassify any budgetary money this evening when we have so many other needs in the district. The Town Council is offering to pay for an operational review that we all, most, I should say, many, agree, needs to occur. Because who doesn't want to have best practices, up-to-date policies, procedures? The problem with our going out on our own is you're asking the Town Council to delegate something that they received in an audit. They're asking to delegate that to us. And I'm not sure they're going to be comfortable. And so they will do their own, either parallel or in addition to. Then we'll end up paying by going on record tonight. And to, to Mike's point, we could actually do nothing if, if that's what I'm understanding you to say, is wait to see what the Town Council does tomorrow. That will not allow us to put on record our request to collaborate. And the other issues that I brought up, including, as you mentioned, the, the, the difficulty of, of the staff keeping up the, the general operations of the business office, which is why my motion requests temporary staffing support, so it doesn't overwhelm the business office. So I think we all want to get to the same place. But with, with all the other financial needs that we have, I, I am not, you know, going to vote to, to move any budget line items to this versus other needs that we're all aware of in the district.
And I just have a
And then Matthew.
So I, I know, like, I haven't had any conversations with anybody, you know. Would they be willing to, they're going to put seventy-five thousand aside anyway, right? Like, would they be willing to fund and pay for it? But the way the audit is managed is through the business office or through the Board? Like, why does it have to be their, you know, all of these items, right? Because some of it, I don't believe is like business office related. Like I said, in my opinion.
I wanted to clarify one item, for example. I asked straight out, why is Power School?
Yep.
And parent, is parent square?
Parent square, yeah.
So there was, there's confusion because the parent company owns E-Finance. So it's not, they're not going to be looking at student or parent data in those systems. They're, they saw them as the owners of the financial software we use. So it all, it all revolves around finance. So these are the things we can clear up if we collaborate on the scope. So that's just where I'm trying to get, is that we all work together. And by our trying to do it, I just, to be honest with you, if I were a Town Councilor, I would not delegate this responsibility to another body within the town. And we are subject, you know, we, we talk about how we're a creature of the state and we are in those areas where the state specifically gives us. But our own elections are governed by town charter. Purchasing policies, all sorts of things would relate to finance are, are, under our charter and the purview of our Town Council. And as long as the review doesn't impinge on any of those responsibilities provided for in the state constitution or, or laws, statutes. I think it's appropriate for them to collaborate with us on this review.
I don't see where the collaboration exists in this.
Well, that's what I'm requesting, is a collaboration on the scope. And I think Ian has put a finer point on that. I say collaborate, but he's getting into the meat of how that collaboration would actually occur.
I have, I have a concern.
Well, actually, in
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a point, a question and an idea. The point is there is no council document. And what we have, some of us, to the best of my knowledge, the way it's written seems to be John Burt's draft, probably made in collaboration with, with, with council. But it's not a council document yet. So it, it's very hard to read the tea leaves of what's going to happen tomorrow in council. My question is, if I understood you correctly, Jay, you feel that the town is not sure how to phrase this. But aside from, I understood you to have, to have said, Mike, that nowhere in this document is there a recommendation that an operation would take place. Did I understand you correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So if there's no recommendation from the auditor to conduct an operational review, the town really has no book to insist on an operational review and making the claim that it is what the auditor suggested.
So, so here it actually is in there. So we may have gotten incorrect about the management letter, but there is, there is mention of a, of a review.
Well, I, I, it's above my pay grade. I, I trust you. So my, my question is, since there are so many questions, could we, could we, this is a, a process question, could we pass a resolution of intent saying that it's, that it, from what we saw in the draft, there are some questions as to who would be the driver of the scope of work and that the scope of work should not go beyond actual operations and, and overlap Board responsibilities. So we pass a resolution of intent to do it ourselves if their final document is pending finding out what they want to do, because we don't know what they want to do yet. They'll get, they'll have a very clear picture of what we're willing to do without our actually having passed a document. If we do a resolution of intent. And that may be a bad idea. It's just, I'm trying to thread a needle here.
Adrian?
The question I have is unclear. And I've heard it a, a couple of times and I saw it, that the Town Council wants to be involved in hiring of staff? Is that?
Yeah, practices. All season practices.
Yeah. And does that mean of teachers? Three of teachers? Or are they talking about everything central, the central office only? I mean, first of all, it's outrageous. And I, I hate to say that, I know, in the spirit of collaboration, however. And secondly, where does state laws put us on that?
Well, and that's the point, is that they cannot, it, it all has to do with finance. Policy, procedure and best practice of finance. If they get to the point where the review is going beyond what they have the authority to do, then we have the right to not cooperate. So.
I, I don't know if my question was answered, but okay, thank you.
Can I just give a clarification?
Yep.
So I'll just read from the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting, that, that portion. It says examine Board of Education's records under four, be payroll for the general fund and special revenue funds. First bullet is review any overspent payroll items. Second bullet is we will determine how employees are hired, budgeted and what benefits are offered.
And that means that we will have an input into what exactly is in my mind.
Absolutely not. Floyd, I, I specifically sent this question to Floyd. Any recommendations would have to be agreed to by the Board. There, there won't be any, this is a review. This is not an imposition. And so according to Floyd, anything would have to be approved in terms of changes. To be honest with you, there's absolutely nothing that they're going to look at that couldn't be FOI'd. All of this could be FOI'd and analyzed by anybody. It just does it and presents it in a codified fashion.
Well, am I up to, I don't know. Is it my turn?
I think it's, yeah.
I wasn't sure if anyone raised a hand recently. To the management letter, the section that we're referring to is To the management letter, um, the section that we're referring to is labeled general ledger maintenance dash Board of Education. The way I read this letter when this letter came out, and the reason I tried to attend that meeting on July ninth to review this document was because I felt like this section was directed towards us, towards the Board of Education. As the Department of the Town that that we are in this slim overlap of finance. General Ledger Maintenance dash Board of Education, Department of Finance. Uh, you know, so so I see this recommend the policy and procedures of current controls to be reviewed and procedures of general ledger maintenance be updated. That, I believe, was a note to us as a Board of Education to take some action.
To do what?
To take some action.
See.
Right, to review our policies and procedures over general ledger maintenance. And as we've also identified, there's some other things that we'd like to review, you know, as a Board of Education, as is within our purview. The other concern I have is looking over the scope of services, the extent and detail to which the town council uh takes its its or whatever, this this draft that the town manager has created in collaboration with, I suspect, the town mayor, because the mayor and the manager are responsible for creating this document, the agendas, that's in the charter. Right? Those are the, those are the two people primarily responsible for crafting agendas. So what I read in this, and we had a lot of discussion a while back about a local education agency and what the definition of that is. And it's, it's like, you know, is it form or is it function? And with this, like, I feel like this might actually muddy those waters. Without us actively participating and having a firm memorandum of agreement of some kind, or just taking the lead, as Adrian's motion suggests. And then inviting the board, the the council to come along and participate and perhaps help fund additional funds on top of the seventy five thousand. You know, if we don't take the lead in this moment, then we may essentially be abdicating that local education agency. Because this this document, in my opinion, involves itself into areas that that are beyond the purview of the town council to influence. This, yes, there's financial impact here, but it should, you know, the word determine, if you look it up in the dictionary, has many different definitions. You know, one is more of a command, an imperative. We will determine what it is. You know, meaning there is a directive. Another definition is discovery, but it's not clear how this being used here. And it's not clear how it would be used if if this should pass. Um, I just think it's a cleaner approach. Um, and and I appreciate Mike's identifying the fact that, yeah, the operational review, I don't see that phrasing here. And I don't see it in the town section saying, hey, town, go review the Board of Ed. I see the hint of uh policies and procedure review and operational controls in the Board of Ed section. The town has its own section with its own recommendations of audits and reviews. Um, so, you know, that's in a section that's for the town. This is our responsibility, and I think we should take the lead on it. And the best way I I see, given the whole context of the situation, the best way for us to take the lead on it is to uh vote in favor of Adrian's motion, and then with my amendment on top as the invitation to the council to jump in, but in a very firm, clear, and well-defined manner through documented memorandum of agreement that is mutually negotiated between both bodies, not just a small portion of anybody.
What else?
See anybody else?
Be interested to hear what Dean thinks.
It would be interesting. You're the lawyer. Precisely why I'm keeping quiet. Oh, I have many things I'd like to say, but in the spirit of uh well, comedy and diplomacy and all of that, uh, I'm gonna hold my tongue. I think what 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 has been said, there've been bits and pieces of what everyone's said, uh, I'm on board with. I feel a little bit like Vichy France. I'm hearing Vichy France. You know, that Vichy France was promised an independent existence, and we all know what happened there. So uh, that's a bit of an exaggeration. Um, I'm very cognizant of the boundaries. I don't want to cause it cause any trouble. We should have a review. We should follow the audit. That's fine. That's what audits are for. That's as far as that goes. It should be our thing. Um, not aware that we violated any laws, so um, we should keep this homegrown. At the same time, clearly, the council has an interest, at least one interest. Um, and I have got no problem with collaborating. I just, it should be on our terms. This is our house. That's it.
I would simply point out that my motion doesn't say that we are abdicating any of our rights and responsibilities uh that we have under state law. Um, it simply requests that this be a collaborative effort. And if we don't put certain requests uh on the record, then we can't expect the council to to consider them tomorrow night. And I firmly believe that no matter what we do tonight, I mean, they're going to pass something tomorrow night. I think they feel, and again, you can say it's under Board of Ed, but I still feel that they feel responsible uh of of us being a part of the town, yes, with certain powers that come from the state. But when it comes to finance and money and trust, they have a responsibility to make sure that the policies, procedures, and best practices are in place. I think they have a a role in that. And um again, if we either say we're gonna do it ourselves or do nothing, then we lose any opportunity to to make a case to them before they make a decision tomorrow night.
Wanted understood. You can connect everything we do to the dollar sign. And again, slight exaggeration, but like the Interstate Commerce Clause in the US Constitution has been used to basically drive whole armadas of trucks through. You know, when you say, don't worry, it's only list, it's only limited to fiscal matters. Well, hell, everything can be tied and called a fiscal matter. So I would just don't want that to be a, you know, you know, a a license for a that has to be understood.
And and again, I've I've consulted with with Floyd with regard to, a review is not a takeover of the district. A review is a review of of information and suggestions that he said we would have to accept. Or not, these recommendations from this impartial uh consultant. I don't see it as giving up any responsibility and any more than somebody FOI-ing all of our hiring practices, our benefits. As far as I know, you can, anybody can request all of that. And um
It's not a question of our responsibility or whether they're available. It's a question of presumed authority. That's all.
Do you stand out a difference between the FOI classes, somebody requests, and they did everything that they request, assuming it's an illegal and not person of our jurisdiction? And agreeing who i- if we support something, we are putting our premature on the findings in some regard, and we're accepting that the recommendations have some validity. And I don't want to get into any specifics, but there's a word tone. The word tone doesn't appear anywhere in here, but I I find the tone somewhat unsettling in certain dimensions. And tone influences confidence.
I agree with what Matthew mentioned about tone, and even in the motion, it's like I hereby move that rotten Board of Ed collaborates with the town council, almost making them the lead. Instead of town council collaborates with Board of Ed. You know, it's, it's just, it's minor, right? But
It certainly switched the orders.
It's minor, but, oh, no, like if, uh, in my view, sorry. But like I said, like, there's, the way the scopes of services was presented, it made it sound like there was things that we did wrong, or that were findings that we needed to fix. And it was just, it wasn't just stating facts, it was making assumptions that there was wrongdoing or something. Um, and it's just the way I read it, um, you know, um. Um, I don't know, it's just the way I read it.
I'm a terrible chess player. Because my chess champion, you're guaranteed to win, but good chess players tell me that you have to look two, three, four, five steps ahead. And it's true that all they can do is make recommendations. But the recommendations will create their own nipples in public confidence in the board.
And it's going to happen.
No.
Whether we have input into it or
So um for the the cow meeting tomorrow from the town council, have have they invited the superintendent or or use the chair to attend and speak to this? The town council? I mean, that's what would happen if we were discussing budget, for instance.
Um, I have not been.
So, I mean, we're having a sort of a, almost a parallel meeting, so it's before theirs. Uh, but I've seen no means of uh or outreach to get our substantive input on this on the scope of the review. Um, what I would like to see, I'll just reemphasize it for anyone listening as well. Like to see us have joint meetings and of matters that matter equally to the the town as a whole and uh and the schools. Without that, I mean, what are, if we vote on something tonight that um it, I I don't, I don't like the idea of, you know, laterally going about it as the Board of Education, uh, because we would need a town partnership anyway. Um, and I also don't like the idea of voting on um collaborating with uh the town where there's not yet been any collaboration, uh, and I guess we're hoping that would happen going forward. Uh, because I'd like to see the scope, I think the scope is too broad, and it, I would like to see it narrower, I think in joint meetings or discussions between um the the town staff and the uh, the the school staff and administration that could be figured out through a memorandum of of agreement. So I I guess I I have, I get from what has happened, so, okay. Um, this is looking at past fiscal years, two thousand twenty-three, ended in two thousand twenty-three, and ended in two thousand twenty-four. That's backward looking, and for that, we're gonna, um, I guess the town is looking for information. We would hope to get information moved forward with. Um, so me backward looking through the process that's led us here, or the town council here, um, I don't see collaboration. And so for me to project that forward-looking, then I I I find it, I I I I'm hopeful for it, but I just don't have anything to base that on. Um, and and so, so I, and I welcome joint meetings on matters um that are of both town and and schools concerned, um, as equal partners. I I think that would have been the way to go to hear the audit here as well. So, and and I I think if we vote on something that supports uh broadly an operational view um led by the town or collaborating with it, not knowing what they've met, they haven't met at all on this yet. Um, we're endorsing a blank check um that, um, and it's not the, it's it's not the check for seventy five thousand that the town's gonna pay. It's the huge check that the the school system, the town, the the children uh might have to pay. It's unknown, totally unknown. And so I'm I'm not voting on anything with that level of uncertainty.
For the taxpayers to have any confidence in our institutions, the institutions have to have sufficient confidence in one another to meet with one another. Maybe the motion we should pass tonight is to express our conceptual agreement with the need for the audit and hope that we can work together, and we're holding off on any action and asking for a joint meeting. And get that to even time for them and asked and and Jay or Susan or or whomever Jay wants to appoint in those be present to answer any questions that council may choose, not to make a speech, but to answer any questions council might have for the board.
Just to build on that, to respond on that, I mean, I I I would be interested in discussing that, but I would want the parameters to be, I mean, if we're gonna do a joint meeting, then let's do a joint meeting. We're equal bodies. If they're all gonna be there, then we all should be there.
No, no, I I I I agree. I'm just thinking that for tomorrow night, they're not gonna have a joint meeting in tomorrow.
No, 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 no.
So for tomorrow night, we would, if you concur and or basically improve what I have to say, I hope. If we uh indicate that we have to build confidence in one another, and the way to build confidence in one another is through a joint meeting, since we're not gonna start the operational review the day after tomorrow anyway, would they kindly hold off on an action tomorrow and have us set up a joint meeting within the next ten days where we can we can find if what what common ground we can find to meet the needs of the taxpayers, the council, the Board of Education, and ultimately the
Right. Well, I guess my question is more of um philosophically, I mean, first off, I mean, do we have to wait for them to invite us to a joint meeting, or can we invite them to a joint meeting?
We could.
In our house. For one, that's one question. Two, I do appreciate Mike's concerns, um. You know, uh, none of these motions are perfect at all. You know, we're all just kind of, you know, throwing throwing spaghetti at the wall here to some extent, you know, because we don't know what the town council's ultimate outcome will be tomorrow night anyhow. You know, but we, if this is gonna work out to be a positive outcome, then we all need equal standing. Uh, and it needs to be a joint effort in in the truest sense of the word. And and that only can be done, you know. There's many ways to interpret the poem, you know, uh, mending walls, but, you know, good fences make good neighbors. And, you know, there's an interpretation that you know, comes down meaning like, actually, it's a benefit to have fences, it's a benefit to understand where the boundaries are. And that's where the MOA, the memorandum of agreement, should come into play. I mean, that's a clear thing. And one of my concerns about, you know, Jay's motion is that there's no stop loss, so to speak, in this in this phrasing. It's just, it's very flawed. And um, but I could also see how, you know, some people could perceive Adrian's as as perhaps too stringent or too strident, you know, because it's 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 too much of a unilateral thing. That's why I think, you know, the the amendment that I have, you know, could work as a nice couple for either one, but again, that's not even perfect in its own right. So, you know, there's, there's a lot to unpack here. And and, you know, I think you know, maybe instead of um, you know, the operational review being funded by reclassifying funds from our own budget, maybe it's the operational review will be funded by, you know, uh, the town council via the 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 fund balance. An appropriation of some kind, I'm not sure the right term for it, um, but contingent on a MOA being established, right? Something like that, you know, it it comes down to to words matter and and the details matter. And I think it's 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 a bit telling that, you know, I mean, I I can appreciate the chair saying that, you know, he wrote his motion in the spirit of of equal partnership. But then again, you know, as 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 Mike pointed out, when have we seen that recently? A a a a sense of equal partnership. I mean, the last time you know, we 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 haven't had a joint meeting, I I can't recall the last time. We haven't had a joint meeting, I, I can't recall the last time the board of ed and the town council had a joint meeting. About anything. Well, that was not a meeting. That was a presentation. Sorry, I don't mean to snarky, but it wasn't really much, yeah, I mean, that, that was not like, we're, we're really. Getting into anything, you know, that was all just preliminary stuff. So. I don't know, there's a, there's, like I said, there's a lot to unpack here, I, I, I think we need to do. Something as a body to. Establish our standing. And our, our, our boundaries, like say, you know, as, as Dean identified, this is, this is our house, this is our parameters. Everything in this document are things that we are regularly, regularly responsible for as a board of education. Everything that's in the proposed motion or the draft motion for the town council. And the town audit was ostensibly a large umbrella that included all the departments of the town. And which we do have that overlap when it comes to the finances, you know, and, and so, I mean, I. Uh, that, that's, that's our responsibility. And. How do we get from here to there? How do we get? From this, you know, a lot of it depends on the town council, the town council could, could, could ease a lot of concerns here by. Extending the invitation tomorrow night to, to, to pretty much set this all on a shelf somewhere. And say, you know what, blank slate, let's invite the board of ed here and let's start. Preliminary drafts of a, of a MOA, of a memorandum of agreement, let's, let's have a joint meeting and start, you know, having a draft, you know. Throw together a draft, you know, bring in, bring in the lawyers, have them at the table. And start taking notes, start brainstorming, what do we want to see, where do we want to go with this? Where's the funding gonna come from? You know, that would be a great, um, step forward, otherwise we're all just kind of shadow boxing. You know, trying to anticipate what the other's gonna do. Um, but I think, as I said before, the reason I supported Adrian's motion. Um, is because I believe we have a responsibility to take a lead. And given everything, the full context of the situation, I think, you know, maybe not this exact wording. Maybe we should reconsider the funding situation. Um, and rephrase and then amend to, 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 to better reflect it, so we don't make a, a commitment tonight to reallocate funds. Um, maybe that's, that's a little too much to pack into one motion. But either way, um. We could even remove the funding and just say that we want to, um. You know. Contract for an operational review in conjunction with the town. Right? I'm just looking at, I'm kind of wordsmithing on the fly here, but, um. You know, that, that's a possibility too, like it's not just a straight either or between these two, these two with this as a possible capper. Like we can do anything we want with the wording here. So, I mean, I, I guess I would ask the chair, would it make you in any more, way more comfortable with, with Adrian's motion if we took the funding out of it? And maybe just put in, you know, the contract in conjunction with the town. To contract for an operational review in conjunction with the town for funding or something like some kind of phrasing like that.
Just don't know how that would, um. Encompass all the other asks that I've put into my motion, you know, asking to collaborate. But then I'm also putting on record that we need these other items, as Mike has pointed out.
Right.
There's gonna be. Demands on the business office that.
Right, no, 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 well, exactly, so we could put the staffing in here, we could just like plug it, we got plenty of commas, we just add a couple more. And, and we could do it right here. You know, we, we could put the staffing in there to be specific and, uh, again, I, I don't, I just. I don't want to feel as, as an individual board member. I'm not in support of us. Asking or depending on good graces, it's more about, this is a business arrangement. Right? We have a responsibility to the taxpayers of the town, we have a responsibility to town council for financial reporting. The town council has. An interest in making sure that their monies are being well spent and well managed. That's all fair. And I have no dispute with that. But as far as like the nuts and bolts, that's us. So I, I guess I, I'm. I, I would be in favor of looking at Adrian's motion and maybe retooling some of the language to make more people comfortable with it. As again, a means of taking the lead, saying, you know, we have all been talking about this for many months. Prior to the town council talking about it. So. You know, in a lot of ways, if, it feels like they're just like trying to take the homework out of our backpack. Um, but in reality, like, you know, this is our job. The operational review is our job. Now, the town does fund the board of ed. That's where our budget comes from, so I think it's also well within reason that we would say we want to do an operational review. We would like the town to pay for it. Obviously, the town has an interest in this operational review. So let's, you know. Take the initiative and say, we want a contract for operational review, we want to do it outside of the budget, so we don't artificially bump the budget up. For one-time expense.
Right.
You know, and, and so. You know, doing whatever sort of appropriation can be done using the fund balance. You know, pull that money over from the town. And the town, what does the town get out of it? They get a willing partner. They get, uh, you know, and, and they get a seat at the table. You know, like, we both, we all get a seat at the table.
I think that's the spirit of my motion, to collaborate.
So.
I don't think there's, I don't think we're giving anything away, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, I don't think we give anything away in this motion. Everything we do in this motion is requesting.
Well.
Collaboration, funding.
But this assumes one, they're gonna pass what they pass, but if they pass this. You know, again, it's like, it puts us in a, in a, in, in what I feel. Like we're, we're. Asking. This is, we're saying we're doing and we would like assistance in getting it done. You know, this is saying, you're doing it, we would like to have something out of it.
This is a fraught moment. And I would imagine I would be astonished if the mayor weren't listening and other council members weren't, weren't listening.
You got three of them up there right now.
So. I think, uh, under my personal conclusion, I may be wrong, I think they're understanding that we are at the point of possibly. Going along with a motion like Adrian's. If they pass. What they have, anything similar to what they have in the draft. Will probably do it on, I think that's my sense of how this story is. There, there's a book called The Art of War. And it says sometimes. You just need to be patient. And not rush. I think maybe we don't pass either motion tonight, but we communicate in a letter. Or a resolution that we want to collaborate, we want to be invited to participate. We will be listening and taking close attention to their needs. And they will be taking close attention to our needs in a partnership. It's the only thing that will help this town avoid just so much. Unpleasantness. And confusion amongst the citizens, we need to work together. So maybe we don't vote tonight. To go path A or path B, but it should be clear to those who are in line that there is a path A and a path B. And that if we're pushed in a corner, we're going to have to choose to. A path. That's just a personal opinion.
And I would say that my motion is such a resolution of reaching out for collaboration. And, and other needs that, that we would have if we were to do this. If, if we actually, if they were to pass this tomorrow night. And then if I heard you say correctly, then you're gonna do your own. How is the business office gonna operate? With two parallel, no, reviews.
I have no doubt. I know you well enough to know that, I have no doubt that it's in your heart of hearts, that that's what you're looking for is a collaboration. I have no doubt at all, the language in this, as I read it. Signs us up for whatever comes down the pipe. And I'm not sure I'm ready to take whatever comes down the pipe.
I, I don't see where it says that.
It doesn't say it.
I, I don't, I don't see where it says, we agree with anything. We're requesting, these are a list of requests, collaboration. On a mutually beneficial and agreed upon. Uh, operational review, uh, with permanent staffing, temporary staffing. And the timing of the review. If these are not submitted tonight, they could choose to start the review. On September, whatever.
But council.
We're not on record.
Advised me not to do a hypothetical, but if we were to pass this to, then something were passed by council tomorrow along the lines of what they had. Where would that leave us?
No worse off. At least we put it on record that these. This is what we, you know, th- this is what we want to do, we want to work together and we want these other asks. Uh, if we do nothing. Then we're left with whatever they decide tomorrow night without having had any input at all.
There's nothing in here that I see, let me read it again, I don't see scope of work or scope of services in here.
Well.
And that's, that's me as the.
Ian had, had, um. Had, had proposed. What this motion lacks by working with the, um. Board attorney, uh, on this process for reaching an MOA. And so that's why those two motions together.
Would it be a good idea to take the five-minute recess and see if you jump all those.
One thing, um, sorry, yeah, I, I want to hear all that before we do, do, do a. And I'll hold my thought.
Even if we put a request. Based on what we've seen so far, at least what I've seen so far. I have a feeling you're gonna go forward regardless.
Well, and I'm sorry, you feel that way, I. Want to try to move forward. And i- in a positive manner and create a new path forward in, in a way that we haven't been able to do before, and you know what?
We've never been to, we've never been antagonistic.
Well, no, and I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, if we don't at least try this. Then. We're left with whatever they decide tomorrow.
So how do we, we, um. Combine what they, they can do in this distinction with yours and, and we.
I'm working on that.
So, so thank you, so I, I started kind of writing one up, um. And I was like, oh man, it's, it's getting closer and closer to James, was, was the point, but. And loo- looking back, I mean, you haven't made the motion yet, but the one that you would intend to make. For me, it's, it's still a step too far, right, because a- and these are reasonable things, like said, you, you know. Talking about what the scope would be and, uh, the timeline for when it starts, these are reasonable things to do. But for me, it's, it's a step too far because, like, I, I'd like us to have clear operating parameters. Just to even set the scope al- along with the town council. Um, and, and a, and an MOA memorandum of, of a agreement, so, so I tried, so. I wrote down something that just takes the first step. And this is not a motion because we have one on the table, uh, but, but, but this is something that I would be comfortable.
If, if, if it's parallel, it could be considered a amendment.
We'll keep yours on. And, and it's not, it wouldn't be considered a amendment, I would think, um. But, so, so this, this is the spirit of what I'd like to convey. Um, that the Groton Board of Education and the Town Council were collaboratively in joint meetings. Say I want that, uh, to set the scope and process of an impartial operational review. And a related memorandum of agreement, parentheses, informed by the collective insights of the superintendent town manager. Uh, to be voted on by both the BOE and Town Council. So that's our, like, that's, that's, I want to go forward from there and, uh, and, and not go too far tonight. That, that's what I was thinking.
Well. I like that too. I think you found the middle with that one, yeah.
I just would like to get on record. You know, yes, we're gonna ask for these. But assuming that that doesn't happen, that still get on record of, of these additional requests, you know what I mean? To, to come up with a, a scope, to include some things, you know, um.
Well, that's where we could use some commas and put in some pieces of Adrian's and put in some pieces of Jay's. You know? And.
Timeline and getting.
I think it's very important to get on the record about a timeline.
So that sounds to me like that's just a little bit more wordsmithing and maybe that one could be a good one we could go with.
Yeah, I mean, to some extent, yes, of course, right, uh, and we could, we could do that, um. Uh, however, in a way, it's like us setting, setting the scope again, right, like, where I really think. We need a joint meeting, like first we need a draft MOA. That like to vote on and, and a joint meeting where we're, where we're going through this scope, like. Liberatively among the two bodies, I think that'd be, um, it, it could be a little ugly, it could be messy, but ultimately I think it, it would be healthy.
Do you think it would be the two bodies or do you think it could be Susan and? John and they come up with a proposal and then we. We all review.
Yeah, that's why I had the informed by collective insights of superintendent town manager and I should say, and staff.
That, that's where the original drafts could come from.
Yeah, yeah.
The starting points.
The starting points from them, right?
Deliberations have to happen as a full body.
Cause they are.
Yes. But at least we know whatever is being presented has sort of been agreed upon by Susan and John. So at least two people have put in their stake and it's almost like a mediator, right? And then we all come in and say like, okay, you know, we, we, we see what you guys are proposing and then. So that we're not all there, like too many, you know, people trying to, um, come up with. You know, scope of services or statement of work. Might just lead to longer meetings without necessarily gaining anything. I don't know if that's something.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, in some ways I can see the benefit of not putting too much detail. So I would go back to like kind of the slimmed down version of what you just said. And, cause that, you just, basically what you wrote does allow for that, right?
Yeah, I think it's really important that I'm, I mean, I, I strongly value expertise and, uh. And that's what we have, um, working for our schools and, uh, working for our town as a whole. And, uh, and that's what we always lean on. Um, so, and, and just having that in here. So that we're not like, um, taking credit for something, but have the work not be hidden behind the scenes and.
Right.
Recognizing in our motion that, um, at every level, um, the bulk of this work is gonna be done by. Uh, people paid to work for the town and, and committed to, to serving the schools and the town.
Right, and, and all the things that anyone might want to see inside the MOA. Or the scope of services would be negotiated in those meetings after the initial template is drafted, but that.
Yeah, and does, and, uh, to address actually, um, what both Adrian and Jay have in different ways and, and. Others have brought up. We could vote on one thing and then also what I'm like, the, like, this is what. We'd like to see right now, or, like, you know, these are the, some of the core elements we'd like to see. You know, and to have that as a separate. Kind of guidance that we're, we're voting on. Uh, going into it, because a- as we've all been saying, we don't know what's gonna, um, happen tonight, but, or tomorrow night, but. Um, having clear guidance, uh, from us could help, uh, uh, steer. Um, open ears and, and for some conversation that they have.
Could you read it again?
Yep, um, it just says what Jay said and Adrian said. So it's a, that the Groton Board of Education and Town Council were collaboratively in joint meetings. To set the scope and process of an impartial operational review and a related memorandum of agreement. This is in parts in parentheses, informed by the collective insights of the superintendent town manager and staff. Uh, to be voted on, uh, by both the, uh, Board of Education and Town Council. Just gets the process started. Yeah, sign me.
Can we just see, do we have a somewhat, can, are we allowed to ask if there's any consensus?
Roberts was written to destroy consensus.
All right. I would like to, uh, withdraw my motion.
Well, then I would, I would, uh, you know, respect your wishes and withdraw my second.
No motion on the floor.
Open floor.
All right.
Draw.
I'll make a motion. Um, and, and how do we start it actually, though? That, so.
I move or I make a motion?
So I move, but, but anyway, might, so I'll make it as is, we might need an opening phrase. So I move that the Groton Board of Education and Town Council were collaboratively in joint meetings. To set the scope and process of an impartial operational review and a related memorandum of agreement. As informed by the collective insights of the superintendent town manager and staff. To be voted on by both the Board of Education and Town Council.
I think I, I, I hear the phrase is missing, I, I. Oh, oh, second, Thomas. Um, I think we might need to tweak the language a little bit. Cause you said I moved that the Groton Board of Education and the Town Council do this, we can't tell the Town Council to do anything.
Exactly.
So we have to say the Groton Board of Education invites the Town Council to work collaboratively.
That's correct, to collaborate.
Yeah, like everything else you said is fine, but invites Town Council.
I, I accept that as an amendment, I guess they're all.
Friendly amendment.
I have for a potentially unfriendly amendment, I'd like to limit the operational review to the scope of the audit recommendations.
That, okay. I'm not gonna accept that.
Here goes the collaboration.
Yeah.
Sorry, the, the audit is what there is.
So, so maybe, um, actually, I don't, I don't know how, do we have to vote on amendments?
You do, yeah, well, somebody's gotta second, someone's gotta second the amendment. And the discussion about whether or not the amendment is cool.
Someone had this, cause I can't just accept a friendly.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right. So we, we gotta go in reverse and do mine?
No, we're doing yours.
Okay, all right, yeah. So you'll second my friendly amendment?
I'll second Ian's friendly amendment.
Change out the word and put an.
And then, then we'd all have to vote on just that little, this is just on the amendment to add. Uh, the, the Groton Board of Education invites the Town Council, that was this change.
Okay.
So, and, and this would just be a vote on that amendment, not on accepting, that's what I can call that.
So, all in favor of Ian's amendment to Mike's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so that passes?
Thank, thank you for that, I read recently that the friendly amendment, it doesn't matter where the amendment comes from, it doesn't have preference. And, and the person who made the motion doesn't have some special privilege because of that, even though we always do it.
Fair enough, I appreciate the commitment to process.
I move we amend the motion as amended. To include a reference to the audit, recommend, the audit recommendations. And hey, if nobody wants to second it, that's fine by me.
I, I will second it.
Question is how to phrase it, where to put it.
Yeah. Oh, have an idea?
Yeah.
Um, one of my favorite words I've discovered recently, commensurate. Commensurate with the recommendations in the management letter of the audit. Um, this will be the twenty twenty-three audit? Right? I just wanna be sure we get the, the title of this letter, right?
I guess it'd be the, yeah, it, it'd be for the, um, the, the management letter.
I guess it, you could say for the audit ended June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three.
For the F Y E fiscal year ending, uh, twenty twenty-three audit.
Thank you.
And that commensurate, where, and does that, so it's, it's a great word. Does that include going beyond that, because the Town Council brought up, um, twenty twenty-four as well, and I could see, um, could see delving into that.
I believe it just means it's, it's, it's adhering, it, it just means that it would adhere to this specific phrasing. In this one sentence. We recommend the policies and procedures of the current controls to be reviewed and procedures over general ledger maintenance to be updated. So that does not specifically to a year, that's just in general.
Is, is it broad enough, the ledger, I think is between the, the, what the, what the, uh, schools. The town keeps the ledger, right? I don't know, I guess, is it broad enough, right?
Um, what I'm thinking is, if we were to, if you, if you think that that's too limiting. Cause the audit letter is only for the, for, for F Y E, uh, twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if we were to say, yeah, let's work on a different kind of a scope, a broader scopes that would cover, you know, subsequent years or cover the future. We're really saying, okay, we're kind of doing an audit ahead of the audit, in a way. So, and there's nothing necessarily specific, I mean, the things that they talk about in there, you know, you're missing this, or you should look at that. That would equally apply to twenty-four, twenty-five, and in the future, so.
Good point.
Nothing specifically twenty-three about these, technically, it's, it's the management letter regarding F Y E twenty-three. But they're sufficiently, you know, general enough to cover any year. I mean, so if they say, for example, you've got a, you know, you've got a problem with your, I don't want to take your copy, but you've got a problem with the, yeah. You know, you wanna look at, uh, you know, your, your, your vendor master file, okay, fine. Well, if that's fixed, I guess there's nothing to talk about anymore, we don't have to worry about that one anymore, but to the extent it hasn't been taken care of. Great, and it's something for twenty-three, something for twenty-four, you know, I don't know whether that's fixed, when that was fixed. Uh, that might be, you know, one of those that's pretty easy.
And, and we'd be vote, if, if this went forward, we'd be, um, but, but we'd be advocating, inviting to work together to set the scope and process. So, so if there wants to be ex- expanded beyond that, we could talk about that for sure.
And I'm just concerned that the amendment. By, you know, laterally, starting off this request for collaboration by limiting the scope. Uh, goes against the spirit of the collaboration, cause we're requesting to collaborate on the scope.
Yeah, but a collaboration doesn't have to mean everybody drops their drawers. You know, I mean, there's gotta be, I, I have to, we have to make some sort of dignity here.
Instead of commensurate, can we do motivated by? Cause, I mean, that's, you know, that's where the dust-up started.
In accordance with, no, I, 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 I understand what's going on, what's going on is that the, the management letter is for F Y E twenty-three. It's considered potentially too limiting, it's got too many stakes in the ground.
Commensurate, but not limited to.
Cause we, well, we definitely at least wanna cover those points.
Right, we definitely wanna cover what's in here, so it's commensurate with this, but not limited to.
Yeah, like motivated, we often use that, we're motivated by, we have our motivation to come up with specific goals later. But we use that as wiggle room.
Gotcha.
Of course, the goal was just to get us all to the table together, to talk together, rather than start imposing limitations at the beginning. They're certainly going to, I, I can't imagine council saying, great, you agree, done. There's gonna be a conversation, so I don't really want to discourage them in thinking that would be too demanding. I, I agree with the substance of what you're saying, but I don't think the process demands it.
Right, and, and the clause, but not limited to. Would not.
Just, if we can get to the table with the two groups meeting together, coming up with, you know, these guys coming up with something. I'll live with that.
I'll just put my cards on the table, I'm in favor of the, of the motion, like, regardless of whether that amendment is attached or not. But, but I do, I do appreciate the spirit of what Dean's saying, and, and I thought like, you know, and of course, and here comes the English major out of me. Like, you know, I, I, I'm just wordsmithing here now for sport, to see if we could make it say what he wanted it to say. With allowing for some wiggle room to expand out. That's all I'm gonna say, it is, it was a challenge of linguistics I saw for a minute that I wanted to try to master. So.
Let's keep it simple.
I think I got it, so if the amendment, you know, we don't have to go for that, I'm not gonna die in that hell either, that amendment, but I do appreciate your spirit.
As I understand it, we have, in the audience, people who are listening to this, who are, uh, involved in this. And if they don't get, that we wanna work in colla- in collaboration.
Yeah.
After all of this conversation.
Yeah.
There's a bigger problem here than, than, and I don't believe that, I believe that. Everybody in this town, for the sake of the taxpayers, wants to work in collaboration.
Yes.
So I think we've had enough of that.
So do we need to call for a vote on the?
Or for a vote on my.
Unfriendly amendment?
My unfriendly amendment, yeah.
Right.
So.
All in.
I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you, you, I think, I think the, the most recent wording was that, uh.
Did you get the sentence, and I just had the tag on the end of it?
Amendment?
Yeah, if you, if you like commensurate, I'll, I'll just read the whole thing.
He likes.
Yeah. Um, so this would be the amended version, and I'll, I'll tell you where the amendment comes in. Um, that the Groton Board of Education invites the Town Council, um, to work collaboratively. In joint meetings to set the scope and process of an impartial operational review. Here comes the amendment, commensurate with the management letter for the F Y E two thousand twenty-three audit. Uh, that's where the amendment ends, and a related memorandum of agreement. As informed by the collective insights of the superintendent town manager and staff. To be voted on by both the, um, Board of Education and Town Council. So that's, that's the amended version.
Point of information. Uh, I'm presuming, dangerous, that, uh, the mayor or her designee will also be present. And I'm wondering if we should have a board person available, you or your designee to be present with Susan, you know. With the team, so it's a four-person team, not just a two-person.
Misses?
Well, it, it's, if. Rather than just you and John meeting together, Susan, rather than you and John, it can be you, John. Rachel or her designee, Jay or his designee, and that way the, the board and the council, uh, have, uh. A presence process and have ownership of this process.
Are you offering an amendment?
I'm asking a point of information, would that appeal to you?
Yeah, but I think. I, yeah, I don't think that that, cause we're asking for joint meetings.
Okay, that's. I think, I think, yeah, I, 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 I appreciate what you're saying too, but I think that, that's. That's after, if, if all things go well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I, cause.
Yeah, I think so, and if it gets too long, I'm striking out every third word, it ends.
Is there any discussion on the unfriendly amendment? As it. All right, all those in favor of Dean's amendment as stated, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Right.
Abstentions, okay, so that.
It's not my first time.
You gonna counter that? No, I think it's.
I'll remember this, yep.
If you'd have been motivated, I'd have gone for.
All right, I think.
Are we ready?
I think so.
Unless there's any more discussion.
Does anybody have any other discussion? Do, do, do we wanna add anything about our requests about permanent staffing, temporary staffing? Given that that expands, doesn't subtract from their scope?
I think that would be covered in the MOA.
You just wanna leave that silent for now?
Can bring that up if they.
Okay.
Or, I just asked, that there's just like a moment of airtime between this motion and voting on and adjournment. In case you wanna add bullet points, it's a separate guided, you know, like take it up separately. That's up to you. If I can see it, get ready.
Left away for him, can I just make the move?
So.
And we haven't passed anything.
We have to finish the question, and then I, so.
Almost.
If. She almost passed it all by herself. All right, so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of. Mike.
You wanna read it again from the top?
Yeah, I'll, I'll read it again.
To be sure we got, are the unfriendly amendment out of there?
The motion is that the Groton Board of Education invites the Town Council to work collaboratively in joint meetings. To set the scope and process of an impartial operational review and a related memorandum of agreement. As informed by the collective insights of the superintendent town manager and staff. To be voted on by both the Board of Education and Town Council.
Okay, so all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, surprised, abstentions? Okay, that passes.
Motion to adjourn?
No, can, can we get this delivered in time to the council and time for the meeting?
Like they heard it.
I should hope we, it got delivered, yes.
Excuse me.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Sorry, what was that, Joan?
I would like Mike give his motion to Susan, so I can get it from her tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely.
Minutes.
All right, thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking with us.
Oh, my God.
Missioners back to school.
Okay.
Or take a picture of it now and.
So all in favor to adjourn, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.